All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Scioto Township of October 23rd, 2023. If you'll please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Chen, here. Commissioner Hubert.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde. Commissioner Reiser.
Here, present.
Commissioner Culberson.
Present. All right. Next, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have additions or revisions?
I would propose to take the Curtis commercial and move it up to the first thing under unfinished business or old business, since we have heard from them before, and I think they'll take significantly less time than the Honey Creek Business Park, which will be newly under our consideration tonight.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by Commissioner Reiser and supported by Commissioner Moore to move Curtis Commercial to the first item under unfinished business. Are there any other modifications? Okay, and move the agenda with that modification. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Agenda is modified. We'll move ahead. Next is public comment. People wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters that are not on the public hearing, and the public hearing this evening is for Firestone Complete Auto Care. So anything that is not in regard to that portion of the agenda, or if you want to seek any other information, such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except for a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes. And with that, I'll open our public comment at 7:02. Do we have anyone in the room that would like to address the Planning Commission during public comment? No one? We'll move online.
Pam Boyd has her hand raised. I'm allowing her to talk.
All right, thank you. Pam.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, a Scioto resident. I have a question, Jan, about the agenda for the Thursday meeting. I didn't see an agenda. Is this an additional Planning Commission meeting?
Oh, yes, it is a working session. The agenda will be posted tomorrow morning after we review it this evening. It is essentially looking at the charge for the advisory group for the Jackson Road Overlay District and discussion around a couple of additional, starting work on a couple of additional zoning ordinances.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? No other hands are raised. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close public comments. Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Reiser. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing public comment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment is closed at 7:04. All right, communications and correspondence. We did receive, and it is in the packet, an email from Kristi Rico regarding her concerns with Honey Creek Business Park. Any other correspondence? All right, and moving on, public hearings. All right, so I would like to open the public hearing for conditional use number 23011, PSP number 23017, Firestone Complete Auto Care for conditional use approval to allow the property to be used as a minor vehicle repair facility. The subject site is ZonC2, General Commercial. And with that, again, those folks wanting to address the Planning Commission regarding this public hearing should be limited to three minutes, except for a representative of an organization or group. And with that, we'll start with anyone present. And typically, what we do is we have the applicant come and do a presentation, and then we move to our planning and engineering review comments, and then we open it up for public comment after the presentation and any modifications by the Planning Commission. So with that, if the applicant is here, please come forward and sign in under this particular public hearing. Welcome.
Hello. Anyone here? Okay. My name is Mike McPherson, with Atwell, civil engineering consultant for the project. I also have representatives from the developer here tonight as well. Appreciate your time. As stated, we're requesting the conditional use approval for Firestone Bridgestone. Site is located in front of Lowe's along Jackson Road, directly adjacent to Culvers. It's a pre-planned outlot, essentially. It's part of a it's part of a condo. So this is unit one of the Scioto View condo. Currently, the site is vacant. We are proposing, like I say, a Bridgestone. It'll have eight bays, approximately 34 parking spaces. It'll have approximately 10 employees there at any one time. We'll have access, cross access through the main kind of Lowe's Drive that then connects to Culvers, which connects due to our site. We also have access further to the west to the private drive that goes back to the existing repair facility that's further to our north via private easement. So we'll kind of be connecting everything together there. We have received planning comments, engineering comments, fire comments for the conditional use. All of it seemed to be pretty much in order and positive, supporting the project. Yeah, I mean, with that, I mean, for conditional use purposes, I guess I'll leave it there. We feel like, you know, this site is obviously compliant and consistent with all the surrounding uses here, and it would be an appropriate business for this location. You've got a packet likely with letters to all the specific items for conditional use and the really preliminary kind of layout, building elevations, which we understand will be reviewed during the site plan process, which would be the next step. So appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions.
Several questions. You keep saying Bridge.
I know.
Bridge Stone or Firestone? Is it Firestone or Bridgestone?
So Bridgestone's the parent company. Firestone Complete Auto Care is the name of the business. I mean, they sell Firestone tires and Bridgestone tires. But Bridgestone is the parent company. That's maybe why the confusion. So my name is Todd Hamula. I'm with the developers, Zeremba Group. Just wanted to add a couple of items that, kind of from the owner's perspective. So we would be purchasing the property. We actually had on their contract a couple of years ago, presented in front of the same board. I know that everybody, for the most part, is new or different. We did receive approval. The plan's a little different than it was before, but essentially, it's the same. We're proposing the same tire store. Obviously, during COVID, right, people stopped driving, really spooked organizations like Firestone, Bridgestone Firestone. So they put things on hold, like a lot of their competitors. So lucky for us, the property is still available. So we're back in front of you for approval this time with the intention of building the store. We don't, we do not have it purchased yet, so everything is contingent, obviously, on getting specific approvals. First step is tonight, I know with the conditional use. We put together a pretty good site plan, in my opinion. The elevations, I think, we've put together, I think we're in comments that we received at the pre-apt meeting, and I think that those look nice. We are obviously turning the bay doors away from Jackson, a little different site plan than we had before, so that really, when you drive it up and down the road, you really can't see in. And the other unique thing about this that Mike mentioned is we do have, we have negotiated for an access easement with the Autobody Drive next to us. So everything will connect from the Lowe's driveway all the way over to the Autobody Drive, so that we can have good access between the two projects. This is a condo, so there's no more splits. So it's kind of like a unified development between Culvers and then Firestone, unified maintenance between the two projects. And I'm here to answer really any questions you have about the, about the project, about the operation. I do have a list of all the services that they provide. They've been in the metro Detroit area for 75 years. So they're very, they should be familiar to most of you, but if they're not, I can answer the specific questions. Aside from selling tires, which is about 40% of the business, they do just general automotive repair, nothing major, just the general stuff, oil changes and, you know, small, small repair items. So, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Is it fair to ask what is different in the proposal versus when it was approved before? So, you know, those should get major consideration. So what did you revise after approval, Jan, and why?
So they came up with a new, with a new footprint. We had the building turned so that the short front of the building was facing Jackson. Bay doors were on both sides. What we've done is we turned, we changed it to their other footprint, moved, we've turned it 90 degrees, so now the bay doors face, I guess, kind of the natural area away from Jackson, in kind of response to some comments we received at the pre-apt meeting. We came to the pre-apt meeting with the same plan. Yeah. And so then we kind of felt best after that meeting, you know, let's, let's respond to the community. We think that this will be a nicer project if now the facade that you're looking at from Jackson is more decorative with what, I mean, quite honestly, Meyer across the street built a beautiful store, right? It's their, it's their downtown village concept, right? So this kind of takes some of that aspect to it, and it kind of decorates or spices up that facade. So that's, that's, that's the major change. The color palette's different as well. The other one was kind of a heavy red brick building. So this one here, we've kind of lightened it up, and I think it's contemporized it a little bit, where we've got kind of maybe more worse tones to it. And I think that, you know, it's kind of more in keeping with some of the architectural styles that are, that are, you're seeing built in retail today.
And a question, is this still going to kind of replace the Firestone that's downtown Ann Arbor? Is that?
It is not.
Good. That's a good question. It was. It was, because there was a developer that
was actually going to take that and to do something with it, and they were displacing them. So they looked at this as, we need to reestablish a store. That obviously didn't happen. They're excited to still remain open there, and so this will be another store for them.
So it'll be this one, Briarwood and Dockfront Ann Arbor?
So I'm not familiar about the Briarwood. Is that, is that?
Is there still a Firestone out there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. It's neither here nor there. I'm just curious.
I don't know if it's Firestone, but there's still a tire place up there.
So I've been, we've been building, we've been building these stores with them over the last four or five years, and some of the questions or concerns we get is, okay, how long you think that they're going to stay around, you know, because companies go and come and go all the time, concerns with that. They have been, their average lease, because they're a tenant, their average lease in the Detroit area has been about 50 years. So when they invest in a site, when they, when, when projects are built, what happens is their business continues to get better and better the longer they're there, because people know they're there. At first, they probably will struggle, and they won't make, you know, won't be generating the same kind of business as like a conventional retailer. It's like, brand new, come on in. It's a, they know they're there, they know they're there, they keep passing by, and finally, they're kind of embedded in the market. So they're, they're here to stay, you know, once the store, it would be built.
Okay, I think I have two questions. We already have two Fire, I'm sorry, tire businesses on Jackson Road.
Sure.
Within our six-mile corridor. What, what do you do differently, or what, what makes you unique that we should approve this project?
It's, it is another choice for consumers, and the amount of business, the amount of rooftops, the amount of traffic that's going up and down the road, there is, there is business to be had for another tire store.
And then my other question is, is I didn't see your site plan, but are you planning to put sidewalks in front of your location?
Yes.
All the way, like from each end, each east and west?
There, and we're just going to bring it into the store, and then we're actually going to add another connection point to the Culvers. Because the idea is, when you drop off your car, you're going to wait an hour, or whatever the repair time is. So you can linger around. Culvers will hopefully benefit from that, as well as Lowe's behind them, which, by the way, is a great co-tenant for, for this business.
I have another question. Are you planning on putting any EV stations in?
We are. We
And what level will it be?
So I've, I've, this would be our first project to put the EV stations in. We haven't decided which level. You're talking about?
Level levels?
I am. It's in layman's terms, it's slow speed, regular, medium speed, and super fast.
Well, level three is, my understanding, you can get 80% charge within 45 minutes, obviously, for those that are just coming to get tires, and then we stay in there for a level two or a level one. I don't think people really buy in level one anymore, but so I would just recommend you take that into consideration.
We were showing three stations on the site plan, so three of the spaces are occupied by those.
Okay.
And you've talked to DTE about getting that, because we run into that, where there's not sufficient electricity to be had to deliver that kind of charging to you. You've had that, your engineers have already looked into that.
We have not. We will, we will do that as a condition of approval, obviously.
Yeah, we learned that the hard way.
Jackson is a major, is a major corridor, so there's major infrastructure on Jackson. I'm not going to say that, you know, what's out there is sufficient, but you would think that there's definitely three-phase electric service out there, which, you know.
Yeah. We'll get to that sooner rather than later.
Okay, we'll do.
Yeah, we had problems on another project.
Across the street. Yeah, yeah, just FYI, throwing that out there. Which project?
Well, that had to do with late planning, as opposed to early planning.
Poor planning.
Poor planning.
So, so don't do poor planning. I know from other issues with solar and that the DTE can be a little slow in response, so. And are your, are your stations going to be solar-driven? EV stations?
You know, I honestly hadn't given that thought. Probably thought that it would just kind of run off of the power that you're bringing in, you know, off the transformer you're bringing into the project.
So we have a dealership project going in east of your location, and they're going to create an EV park, about 12 EV stations at level three, and they're going to be solar-driven. As a matter of fact, the whole dealership is solar, except for some backup generators. But, you know, I can, we could give you further information. I mean, A, that doesn't take up more fossil fuel energy to run and save yourself some dollars on your facilities and
Right. And just a reminder for everyone, we will see the site plan when it comes back this evening. It's just a conditional use, but it's good to bring up things that we want them to consider in the site plan, for sure. All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, we'll go to our planning report.
Hi, everyone. Just a couple things I'll add to the applicant's presentation. They noted that this, this is, this would be a new building for this conditional use. It's about 6,000 square foot with the eight service bays. All work is going to be conducted inside, so we don't have to worry about outside storage of materials and cars and those types of things. Site access, as they mentioned, will be from the existing Lowe's driveway. There will be no new Jackson Road access. They will come through Culvers, the rear of Culvers, access their site, and then, as they mentioned, they will then go further west to the existing Caliber Collision Drive, so that's a great benefit. Currently, there is no secondary access to Lowe's, so if there was a major problem at that driveway, that would be a major problem. So that's really important to think about. Originally, as they said, this conditional use was approved in 2020. It went to the Planning Commission. It was approved by, was recommended by the Planning Commission and approved by the board, and we didn't see a site plan, so that's why they're back in front of you. And really, except for modifications to the site plan, which we'll review at a later date, this is the exact same use that we looked at in 2020. So I'm happy to answer any question, other questions you may have. I know Stacy Monte is on, if you would like her to provide any comment.
All right. Any questions for Laura? Then Stacy, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I have nothing further to add. We recommended approval with no outstanding comments.
I have a question for Stacy.
Yes, go ahead.
Stacy, you've looked at the, well, let me ask you this. Is there sufficient amount of water? Well, I don't know if this particular facility would be using a lot of water, but do we have enough?
REUs?
REUs.
Yes, the REUs are not a concern for this project, or really anything like it. There's room for a handful more, let's put it that way.
Okay. And then, looking at their, thinking about their waste treatment system and their stormwater, have you looked at that stuff yet?
Not yet. That level of detail generally is not reviewed as the conditional use, but I believe there's a regional pond with Lowe's that they'll be contributing to, so we don't have any reason for concern in terms of stormwater. Any additional they'll do on-site, and there appears to be space if needed.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the whole project is going to be paved over. I mean, the whole, the whole area is paved over.
I don't believe all of it is. There is some green space between this project and Culvers. I don't know the specifics on percentages, though.
And this is just the conditional use?
This is just the conditional use.
Public hearing, actually. We're not even on the conditional use approval.
Okay, and any other questions for Stacy? Okay, then I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on the conditional use? See no one? We'll go online. Oh, there is a hand raised. All righty. Pam Boyd, I'm going to allow her to talk.
Thank you, Pam Boyd. I remember when this came before the commission in 2020. I'm really glad to see that they did indeed work with the private road owners to be able to exit the private road, and I appreciate the addition of the EV spaces, and in particular, changing that building around. I think that that's very helpful to have the bays at the back, and I would recommend for this commission to approve, approve them tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No other hands are raised. All right. Our agenda had separated this, so we'll be doing, let's see, no. Yeah, it separated it, so we're going to hop back to this one. All right. So any other public comment? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close. A motion by Commissioner Hyde and supported by Commissioner Reiser to close public hearing. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed at 7:25. All right, then we're moving on to the possible action for the conditional use for Curtis Commercial mixed-use drive-through restaurant. If the applicant would like to come forward. And, yes, if you'd like to, this item was sent back to the Planning Commission because it had, there was some additional information that was provided, and they wanted us to review it on March 11th.
Traffic impact study and information from the board.
Yeah, was there anything else?
No, the board did not have the traffic impact study.
But we do now.
Right, but, yeah, but, and they didn't have, there was some stuff from fires, supplemental information, which I'm sure they'll get to tonight.
Well, good evening. My name is Jim Curtis. Our family is the owner of the property. To my right is my son, who is one of the senior managers of the company. To my left is Joe Mader, who's going to present tonight from Washington Engineering. We were here in July, and there were questions that were raised that we couldn't answer. And we're here tonight because we have various studies that were requested of us. Without taking a lot of time, I just want to thank you for giving us this evening to talk about this. And when we met with you, we listened very carefully to your comments. We've incorporated all of your requirements and suggestions that you had made at that time. In addition, several of the Board of Trustees members suggested other thoughts. Besides the various ordinances that we followed, and then some beyond, we've incorporated your suggestions we think are valuable and make this project more viable. So with a little more said, Joe, if you could present, that would be
So we can share screen?
Yes.
I'm going to shorten this down a little bit. We set this up for the board. Okay. I guess that Why? It just died. It just turned. Note that will go away. Yeah, it's totally dead. That's not good. Going off my notes. As you recall, a few months ago, we were in here with these project, Curtis Commercial, open era building, to convert it to a drive-through. That's our request, it's for conditional use for a drive-through. One of the slides I had was, you're just kind of giving your idea, within this Jackson Road, Z Road corridor, there's about 15 different drive-throughs in this location, whether they're fast food restaurant, banks, CVS, Meyer pharmacies, car wash, the ones that have been approved recently, a couple that, you know, are proposed. Even tonight, there's another one on the agenda. So this property is mixed use. It's got two banks on either side of it, where we share common driveways. I think most of you have seen this already. You know, we've gone through this before. Both banks have expressed no concern over the drive-throughs. Matter of fact, I think, Jim, correctly, if I'm wrong, they're kind of appreciative of it, because it does bring more business to them as well. So there's a shared use there with having the banks next door and a proposed drive-through here. So when we were, before you, previously, there were several items that we were asked to take a look at. One was traffic. We completed a traffic impact analysis, which you have in your packet tonight, that shows, you know, the conversion of this from a standard restaurant to a drive-through facility is about a 3% increase in traffic volume. One thing I will point out with bank uses One thing I will point out with bank uses over the years, which isn't reflective yet in the ITC guidelines, is the decrease in number of people that are going to banks now. So my feeling overall, you might see kind of a little bit less traffic there when it's all done. One other thing. Spoke to this. Those points. The other thing that was pointed out was pedestrian safety. You'll see in your letter tonight, we've got a letter from the fire chief indicating that over the last three years, there have no, been no pedestrian car accidents in drive-throughs to his regulation or have records of. Though the traffic study did make some recommendations to help improve pedestrian safety. We added a stop bar at the drive-through, so as cars exit the drive-through, there's a stop bar there along with a pedestrian crosswalk sign highlighting those pedestrians that, you know, there's a crosswalk there and they should be taking note of that. We also added some additional pavement markings to help when people pull in, direct them to the back of the property where the drive-through is. So there's more pavement markings on the ground, additional wayfinding signs to direct them to the drive-through. We've also painted the crosswalks like you would see in a normal intersection with striping. Motorists realize that there's pedestrian areas that they're walking. Last item was sustainability. Though not required for this project, we have elected to pre-install conduit from the transformer to the front area where we have the opportunity to install EV charging stations. These are going to be a little more tenant-driven. Once we get a tenant, we see what the tenants are, then we can establish exactly how many and where those could go. I did have a conversation already with DTE regarding the transformers that's there. They have no issue with supporting four-stage-two EV chargers or at least one-stage-three charger, depending on what the use and demand would be. Until we got into the full design, they couldn't give us all the specifics, but they felt looking at the records, there was no issues with providing that service here. We added the bike coops and requires three coops. We have space for four bikes instead of just three. We've also added additional trees to the site in the background, the tension pond. We placed a few more trees even beyond our required code. And we're going to be upgrading the parking lot to full LED lighting. Don't make it more sustainable. So with this, I'm, I'm going to keep this short. We believe we meet all the standards for this conditional use. We believe we've added the information that you requested from us last time. And we welcome your feedback and questions. I apologize about the presentation.
If you're computer, if you can email it to somebody here, we could make it part of the packet or whatever.
I don't have my computer to email.
Right, questions for the applicant? I just had a couple of questions and that was, I noticed that the traffic analysis suggested a few additional signs and then a stop sign coming out. You did the stop bar but not the stop sign. You did the pavement markings, but there were a couple of like directional signs for the drive-through that they had suggested. I'm just wondering, did you just think it was oversigned or just sort of?
No, I thought we did everything they asked for. It was either a stop or a yield sign at the drive-through.
Yeah, there was a stop sign, you did a stop bar and then you did, you added the pedestrians, yield pedestrian sign. Yeah, but the
Directional.
The directional, you did the pavement markings, but there was supposed to be a sign pointing, you know, kind of pointing your way through the parking lot for the drive-through.
Yeah.
And then a stop sign right at the stop bar, which I didn't see on the plan.
So as you pull in, right as you get to the lane where the drive-through would be coming out, that next island, there's a drive-through sign straight ahead, right there. When you get to the end, there's going to be a backlit sign that says "drive-through" to the right. So we added the extra sign. We also painted on the ground the drive-through notations. We added the yielded pedestrian sign. I think we caught everything that was in it. We tried to follow.
There was one more right at the entrance of the drive-through. Did you add a sign there? I missed the backlit sign, sorry.
Yeah, that was there. I don't know that we have a sign right at the drive-through entrance. But we can certainly add one there. I think that's important, yeah.
Motorists observe signs. Do motorists tend to follow signs? I think signs are an effective way to encourage good motorist behavior.
Well, I mean, when I pull into Meyer's parking lot, they have signs to direct you to the drive-through. I mean, that's how you know where you're going. Yeah, so I mean, I think they're definitely helpful.
To urge people to watch for pedestrians.
Yeah, they were, they added a couple of yield pedestrian signs.
I guess what the point I'm getting is, signs don't really work. You have to, you have to build it with the understanding that motorists don't pay attention to these things.
And why did you ask him that?
Because I wanted to get, I wanted to lead us into the discussion about this.
Okay, we're just asking questions of fact right now, right? Okay, Laura, do you want to?
If he doesn't know, he doesn't know.
Alright, I don't have a lot to add, except that yes, we did look at the modified site plan prior to going to the board and noted all of the conditions in our current review have been addressed. And that they did provide the traffic assessment. And I'm sure Stacy can talk about the traffic assessment more. Jant, your question about the additional drive-through sign, that, Joe, I know you said you'd add it, but sometimes depending on the tenant, they'll have their own signage also that will be directional in nature through the, you know. So some of the, some of those signs may be tenant-driven later, you know. There isn't going to be a drive-through until there's a tenant, right? So some of that may change to more specific signage for that particular tenant. But you know, as everybody said, the planning commission recommended denial. It went to the township board. Additional information was provided. They've now referred it back to you. They have asked for this to be on their agenda for tomorrow. So your, the conclusion, your motion, if there is one, will be turned around and submitted to the township board tomorrow morning for their consideration tomorrow.
Any questions for Laura? OHM?
We recommended approval of this conditional use in our letter dated September 19th. We had no outstanding site plan comments, but we did have one comment from our traffic department that reviewed their traffic impact analysis. And they just noted that there may have been a different land use code that could have been used, which could generate more traffic. I don't know if that's something that Joe could speak on tonight, but we would still be comfortable recommending approval.
Can I ask you what that, what that means, what you just said about the traffic study?
Or land use code.
So their study, they noted this as a fast casual restaurant. And the code that we noted could have been used was the fast food restaurant with drive-through. And I am not a traffic engineer, so I'm not sure if there's much more I can give input on for that tonight, but I don't believe that it would generate that much more traffic. If at all.
Either you or Joe define what a fast casual restaurant is.
Well, fast casual is kind of, I look at McDonald's as fast food. You drive in, you get out, you get quick. Open Air Bread is more of a fast casual type restaurant. You can probably speak more to this than I can, but it's not basically mostly pre-made and just put together and handed to you. It takes a little more time to get through as a fast casual, so. And I believe, Jim, that's kind of what you're marketing this to.
We are, and those are the kinds of persons or companies that are acquiring about the building.
I do have a question, and maybe it's for OHM also. You said that the bank drive-throughs are decreasing the amount of drive-through traffic. But those, I assume, had previous conditional uses approved for a drive-through. What happens if both of those banks decide that we're going to turn into fast casual drive-throughs? Does the traffic impact analysis or statement take into account that those could be future drive-throughs also? We could have three of them right in a row?
You mean restaurants?
Restaurants, yeah.
May I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, part of the mixed-use arrangement that was made prior to acquiring the building is that if we are a food-oriented building, that the banks next to us have to remain non-food. Conversely, if they are banks next to us, that we cannot have a bank. So I guess you could say the beauty of this is that, and as Joe was alluding to, the thought that the last 20 years, banking in person has diminished to some extent. To what it is, I don't know the number, but in general, you see the numbers of banks that are closing. It's more online. But the benefit to us, just not because of us, is that as long as we are a restaurant or a food-driven entity, that we will not have food next to us. And it can be financial, it can be retail, anything but food. So that in and of itself would diminish the potential for an excessive amount of use in that area.
And that documentation is in the packet, so you have records of that information.
Now I have a question about that because it talked about a force majeure that if it's vacant for a year, and I don't know what that means. It means that it, that if it's vacant for a year, then that agreement is no longer valid? Is that?
Potentially. For example, right now, our building is empty. And though it's been marketed for food, the likelihood of being able to convince a municipality or rather an organization that, that we aren't driven towards food would be hard, you'd be hard-pressed. But.
But I guess what my question is, according to the agreement, then if the banks are vacant for a year or your facility is vacant for a year, anything could go in there? That it wouldn't be restricted any longer?
And I'm not an attorney, so I, and I don't know if that duration applies to if there's no activity to maintain it as one entity or not. If there is a bank, whether the bank is trying to sublet to another bank and hasn't been able to do so. Or if we are empty and we are taking efforts to fill it as a restaurant, there would be elements there that I think would carry beyond here.
You entered into this agreement. You don't know what that?
I'm sorry.
You entered into this agreement. You don't know what that language is for? It seems like it's there to allow for change of circumstances. Whatever you agree to, that one proviso seems to allow for change of circumstances.
I don't quite understand from the.
So first I'm saying you entered into that agreement. So I don't know why you don't know what that provision means. And then secondly, it sounds like that provision allows for a change of circumstances. Then the agreement doesn't hold up.
None of it would apply if we have a restaurant there. And that's what we're applying for.
The implication was that your neighbors also could be in that same position later and could put a restaurant in if it lasted that. That's the thought. There are provisions to allow there. That's where you were.
But, but I will say this, force majeure is extreme cases. And we're talking about Comerica Bank and Detroit Federal Credit Union. This isn't a little mom-and-pop savings and loan or something. These are big entities. And with respect to the drive-through, they're going to have to deliver the hamburger to you in a pneumatic tube. Because these drive-throughs aren't sequent, they're, they're like bank drive-throughs. They're three abreast.
But I guess the question goes back to a conditional use. If a conditional use is approved, okay, let's say that a bank wanted to become a fast food restaurant. They have a conditional use for a drive-through. Would it have to be a new conditional use for that particular business?
I would, I would, don't, I don't have those conditional uses in front of me, but I would, I would guess to say possibly. I mean, if it was specific conditional use for a financial institution with a drive-through, then a restaurant would not, is not the same thing as a financial institution drive-through. But also, you know, as Chris said, if anything new were to go there, we're going to require another traffic study. And so it kind of negate, you know, not that this isn't an appropriate conversation, but some of that's kind of negated by when these uses change, they have to come back before us for a site plan or a conditional use, and we reevaluate it at that time.
They're just so disparate. Because I drove to both of them in preparation for this meeting. And I go, yeah, there's drive-throughs, but they're just different kind of drive-throughs.
We don't want your coffee sent to the.
You never know what they're being done, right?
You're going to have to get yourself in a, like the little door, yeah.
So can, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, we can answer it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Moore. I think Mr.
No, my name is Rebecca. So pedestrians can go through your drive-through?
It's designed for that.
I didn't hear you.
It's not designed for that. It's a stacking lane.
The reason I asked that question is not trick. The reason I asked the question is because there are times where restaurant interiors inside the restaurant are closed and only the drive-throughs are open. I mean, this is not necessarily for you to focus on, but so that you understand where I'm coming from as a commissioner on this planning commission. We are trying to rethink the motor raceway on Jackson Quarter. And one of the targets that we're looking to, to, to change is to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And you come along, and not just you, everybody wants to drive-through since the pandemic. I get it. You can still make money even though you can't get inside. So, but the reason I'm asking these kind of questions is because I'm trying to figure out how that, what you're trying to do. And Panera is a mess on Z. It's a mess. Even in my car, it's a mess. So for me, as a planner, I'm trying to look at your project and try to see how that fits into what we're trying to do with the Jackson Road Quarter.
Sure.
This isn't just about you. I don't care how many drive-throughs there are in existence today. It's an ever-changing dynamic. And so when I ask the question about how does, I mean, we have a correspondence from a resident now complaining about another project. She doesn't have a car. She's got kids. She walks. She catches a bus. So for her, if your, your inside restaurant facilities are closed, how would she get something from you? It's not just you, it's all of them in this. But I just kind of wanted to give you some context of why I asked the question.
Well, it's a valid question, and then societally, we have to ask that. And hopefully, we won't go through what we did three years ago. This drive-through design is compatible. I would like to think it's far more safe than all the others that are out there inside of township, given that only one side of the building would have a drive-through on it rather than two or three sides of a building. Hopefully, we won't have another pandemic. Hopefully, we won't have people who can't go to restaurants.
Or it could even be that your, the restaurants' inside hours are less than. I mean, a case in point is Wendy's. They have a drive-through and then they shut down their inside of the restaurant. What would a pedestrian be, how could they get a Wendy's burger? What would a pedestrian be, how could they get a Wendy's burger? So I'm not, this is not just particular to you, but as a planner, I have to look at all aspects. Not just what you want, not just what even sometimes the community wants. So I'm I'm a little trying to jive it in my mind.
I know that prior with the pandemic, Panera had a a kiosk in the front where people ordered and there was a delivery outside. I think those are the kinds of things that restaurateurs or any business for that matter is going to figure out to keep in business, to keep their doors open, but.
But you would not be involved in that, right?
Oh, of course not, as a landlord, it's like telling them how to run their business. What we want to do and we need to do is provide provide them with as much capability to succeed as possible. And without the drive-through, it it eliminates a huge element of success, their ability to succeed. There's a fear factor to not have it, and that's the truth of the matter. And our exposure by advertising and promoting this building for nearly a year now. Verifies that fact that people are only interested, largely only interested in the drive-through because it protects. Their ability to spend all the money that they would need to spend to to renovate the building, to create the the image or the product that they want and to stay open.
I understand why you want it.
Yeah.
Or your your Lizzies want it. The question is, do we want it?
And and I would say the public wants it because if they can't or are afraid to go into a restaurant, then they have yet one more element of how they can get the product they want. Our hope, and this is why we're here, is to be able to attract a good quality restaurateur in this beautiful location, this beautiful building. That is empty and only empty because that tenant left so they could have a drive-through. It it tells us clearly that the demand, not not the desire, the demand is there for that.
Commissioner.
Hi.
I believe this is. What is, what you forced tonight is the conditional use.
Correct.
What is the next step at assuming it passes all of her?
Yes, it would it would require a site plan.
We would have, it would come before us and then come before you.
Correct.
The board, okay.
Thoughts of reconsideration based on the additional information and the additional. Addressing some of the concerns.
I distinctly recall, I I voted in opposition about a traffic impact study. You have provided one. What I I still have concerns over the fast casual versus the fast food. But from what I heard from O H M that there was negligible difference between the two, so I'm gonna go with that. That's, you know, accurate information because I I don't want to get caught up. The fast food is much worse than than what it is for fast casual, so. I did say I I would change my my vote, and I will on record say that if you submitted the traffic impact statement, so that's where I stand.
And I would say that I I appreciate what the changes that have been made. I think that they've addressed my concerns for pedestrian versus car collision potential. I look forward to hearing who the. Tenant would be, but I don't know, that's unknown right now.
It's unknown, we'll have to see.
Yeah. Wish you'd like getting somebody. Thank you.
I think my concern is, and I would be. I I think I would want to make a contention on it being a fast casual restaurant because I do think, I mean, even if you look at the volume going through the Panera. Drive-through, I have some concerns. It's true, you have quite a bit of stacking, but it isn't a double, you know, lane, and it isn't designed for fast food. So I think by conditioning it on a fast casual restaurant as opposed to a fast food restaurant. I it there's, it relieves one source of concern that, you know, it's a single window and. It I don't think it could handle a fast food kind of rapid fire.
Turnaround.
Turnaround, yeah.
Would you also like to have the entrance sign? You know, make a contingent upon having an entrance sign to the stacking lane eventually of some type.
And then the other thing is, I think, you know, with a lot of the conditional uses, we are. You know, you you went as far as to put the conduit, but I think. You know, that it also is conditioned upon, and I'd like it to be conditioned upon, you know, a certain number of, and maybe that is. You know, four level twos or one level three charging stations. Just so, I mean, that hopefully we are moving toward.
Is this where the people who who go into customers that who go inside could park their car, charge it while they're inside?
Or is it in the employee area? Have you decided where the charging stations would be? Because if if it's fast charging, it could be for.
Customers.
Customers, if it's the category two, it's typically more for employees.
At this point, it it's supposed to be in the front, that is on the south side of the building. And at this point, we would like to have one station with two contacts where there is. Public or general parking and one for ADA. That that's the thought here. Closer to the transformer, I think, is better, in part also because the idea is to tear up the sidewalks. That are there in order to make them ADA approved because they're slanting a little bit. And. We'd like to pause as to what to put in, only because and have all of the wiring in, of course. Because it depends on the user, you know, if you have somebody who's gonna be there for a short period of time or longer. So and that's why we proposed not to put the EV stations in specifically or to define which ones they were. I think, Joe, you had mentioned what our capacity is at this point is is what?
Yeah, what DT has given us is four level two or two level three. And that's without, obviously, we need to go through their design development team, but that's what they said, current capacity of that transformer would be.
Could we just make that a condition for level two or three, two level threes?
We'd like to have the flexibility to move them if if it's gonna be tenant-driven.
We won't specify where.
Right, we're putting the conduit in, assuming, but the tenant may want, you know, they might have employees that want to park out back, they need a charging station, you know, it's gonna be.
I don't care where they go, but I I want four two or three or two threes, you know.
Any other thoughts from commissioners?
I'll.
Yep, go ahead.
My point, sure, I mean, I think you'll all heard them, but. I I believe that drive-throughs are detrimental to a community's walkability. I realize that walkability is not something we seem terribly interested in, mostly lip service to it. Every single one of these drive-throughs that we approve hurts our sit-down restaurants. I get hurt, Mr. Curtis here, by approving another drive-through location that that cost him his tenant. Drive-throughs are harmful to the environment, as much as we wish everybody could drive a EV car. They are still driving gasoline-powered cars mostly. They're gonna be idling in these lines. And then also, this is a C-two zoned district, which I know we've already gone over this, that this is in the Jackson Road overlay district. That for whatever reason also allows conditional C-three uses in there. This is not a drive-through overlay district, so we don't have to approve drive-throughs on Jackson Road every time I come up. Those are my.
Question. Commissioner Moore, we're in discussion, but I. Sorry, I forgot.
And I guess, and and I following up on Commissioner Humans, I appreciate the walkability, but. You're gonna be able to walk from Discount Tire to Wine Guards. There just isn't residential there right now. You've got three drive-throughs that are to the east of it, three drive-throughs that are to the west of it. You've got a drive-through bank on the corner, a drive-through Wendy's and a drive-through right at across the street. This place literally backs up to a freeway on-ramp. This would probably be the first restaurant close on the south side near the freeway exit. I mean, I really do appreciate pathways. I'm the guy that fought like heck on a pathway that's in Chang in my neighborhood and down there where there's where there's a lot of people, but. It I I do want to connect people to businesses, but especially in the residential context. But we don't have that there. There's still sidewalks, we're accommodating the 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 residents that do want to. Go there and get out of their cars and walk there or walk there from if we eventually do get residential on Jackson Road. I disagree with Commissioner Moore's. Contention discussion where you might have pedestrians use a drive-through because I think that's dangerous for pedestrians at night. When motorists aren't expecting to be there. I wish there'd be some sort of exterior kiosk or you phone your order in and someone runs it out to you. But I I I just worry about combining pedestrians at a drive-through when when drive-throughs. Least at this point are so auto-centric. I'm not saying this always going to be that way, but maybe there are other ways to accommodate those customers on foot. I I I. I'm gonna be in favor of this because of where it is. It's so close to a freeway on-ramp. They've got the traffic study, they did all the accommodations or recommendations, whether it's fast food or I can live with the fast. Almost fast food, well, I forget the nomenclature.
Yes.
Fast casual. I I I can live with that, I can live with the the two level three. I it it those are reasonable things to ask for, but the fact that it's been out of. Out of business for a year despite they're trying to do it, tells me that something else is needed. We either gotta put an apartment complex next there so everybody can walk there, or we gotta do something, I I think, to to. Reasonable for the for the site.
I would say we could also stop approving new drive-throughs so that restaurants, sit-down restaurants, have a chance to compete here.
Commissioner Hyde.
I got a little confused by the. Turret on the lumens. Are you are you redoing the lighting in the parking lot to to take you to the boundary areas that were. Lit more than the ordinance allowed?
Yes.
Yeah, with the exception of the the driveway where it is, it's shared, yeah. Commissioner Moore.
Apologize for my aging brain, I remembered my question.
It could get to be my age.
Well, I might be there. There's sidewalk.
Yes.
In front of your building.
Yes.
Okay, that was that was my question.
Turbo all the way down to make it greener, more attractive.
The building has not been vacant for a year. Panera just moved there this summer, moved from there.
I don't know when they moved out.
Well, I'm letting you know, it wasn't a year.
Okay.
They just moved this summer. And. I think we have to include all of our citizens, so for me, drive-through is a piece of cake. I got two cars, three, so. But there are some of our residents that don't have a car or choose not to drive a car or whatever. And that's the 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 crosshairs, if you will. If I think the kiosk is a a very, a great idea to address that issue. Not the issue of sustainability in terms of emissions. But it sounds like we can't even address the kiosk issue because you're gonna do, you're gonna deal with that with your tenant or whatever. So for that reason, I'm not gonna vote for the project. It's, I'm not persuaded by the fact of how the number of drive-throughs we have. We have to start change somewhere. And I am persuaded by those that don't drive vehicles that live in our community. I don't care if it's sitting on ninety-four or sitting back off of Liberty. How do we, how do we incorporate all our residents?
Don't agree. You know, restaurants, like anyone else, they're going to do what they have to do to survive.
Right.
And so I know that your question is a very valid one, and that thought is a very valid one. And a- as a landlord, I don't intervene with restaurants or other retailers. I stand back, provide good space, reasonable rent, and I believe in them that they're going to do the right thing for the customer, which is the public. So if it means that they have kiosks.
I've gone to Panera when I was at your building, gone to carry-out food. It didn't stop me from going to Panera Bread because it didn't have a drive-through. So I guess, you know, but I just think, you know, for me, it comes down to what we want to do with the. The corridor, but more importantly, how do we incorporate other residents that don't have a vehicle? And we already have restaurants, like I said, the Wendy's on Zee Road. They closed down the restaurant, they still have their drive-through, and I bet they feel the same way. I don't want a pedestrian standing there, you know, so. I'll leave it alone, I don't want.
All right, I just wanna, you know, I think it's time for a motion and. So Commissioner Hyde, you you feel that they've addressed the concerns that you had?
They did, and I could start the motion, and I think I have a list of some things that I'd like to see included in it, and see if other people do too. But. To the right one. For the possible action, CU number twenty-three zero zero nine, cursed commercial mixed-use drive-through restaurant. That we approve with some stipulations.
Do you have the?
Oh, you're right, somewhere.
Yeah, I think it's on the second page, yeah.
Thank you. Instead of making it from scratch. The conditional use, drive-through restaurant with mixed use. Based upon the information received from the applicant reflected in minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the site plan and related information received by the township. Meets the required standards and findings for the conditional use and recommends approval. Specifically, it's found that the following required standards. Found and findings found in section thirty-six, two twenty-two of the zoning ordinance have been demonstrated by the applicant. They will be harmonious in accordance with the objectives and regulations of this ordinance. He will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future uses in the vicinity. See that the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services. Such as highways, streets, police and fire protection, drainageways, refuse disposal. Or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. D, that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the use or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring users, persons, properties, or the public welfare. E, that the proposed use will not create additional requirement of public loss for public facilities and services. That will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. F, will be compatible with the township's adopted general development plan. Further, the planning commission recommends the following conditions be placed on the subject conditional land. Heard that we only, that we limit the restaurant usage to fast casual. Rather than fast food category. That we add or that you add entrance signs at the entrance to the drive-through lane. Of in some sort. And that you install EV stations for either four level two EV chargers or two level three EV chargers. Now, do we want to have that be installed or 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 prepped for installation?
Conduit or wiring?
I heard conduit, but I heard discussion of having them installed. And I like the fact that they were thinking of putting them out front because that's for the public and the public can pull in and. And and I think you would find that level threes would give your customers the advantage of, or not your customers, you're the landlord, but. Going inside and sitting down and having a a brief meal and going back out and finding your battery is well-charged. So but I could live with level twos. So those were the ones that I.
I I would ask that we amended to signage as recommended by the. Traffic.
Okay, pointed out that it was recommended, and we'd like to see that included in the final.
Install signage as recommended by the TIA, Traffic Impact Assessment.
Assessment, yeah. And then, I don't know, the chargers, I would I would like to see at least two installed and but I think you could say prepped for this many and then with the installation of at least two chargers.
I mean, what if the lieutenant doesn't want, doesn't care about having EV stations? That's what I'm saying, it needs to be a part of the conditional use.
So with at least two installed initially and prepped for the rest?
Yeah.
Okay.
Except if it's level three. Then they're done.
Yeah, right. They could still do two. Okay, so prepped for two and uh prepped for four level two and two level three and uh with the installation of two chargers.
Was that in four?
Charging station.
Four, two level threes?
Yeah.
Okay.
With two installed.
Minimum two installed. Is there support?
Support by riser?
Support by riser. Any further discussion?
Fast casual. Uh does that seem slippery or? What is Arby's?
That's fast.
Oh, it can't forever. It can't be. I'm only kidding, but like, how do we know it's fast casual in real?
Well, the traffic study defined.
There there is a def- I don't have it in front of me, but there are definitions of fast casual versus fast food. And then there's coffee shop, right? So Starbucks isn't considered a fast food. That's an even higher intensity of traffic than a fast food restaurant or a fast casual.
So it's like very fast food or something?
No, well, it's I think it's just the amount of traffic. It's it's it I think has to do with the amount of traffic that these different
Do we want to say fast casual as determined by our planning consultant or do we or do we do we? Am I the only guy that under doesn't understand what that is?
I don't know what the hell it is either.
Well, it would be, it I mean, it would be at whatever definition that the traffic impact analysis based on the traffic. Okay, so that would be a
Oh, oh, I mean.
The TIA definition, okay? We'll add that as a
Long longest, I don't I don't want any remorse uh like we had with the uh other things.
Tomorrow night, you're gonna have to explain.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment, um that that fast casual restaurant will be based on the
No, I'm just asking, I guess I'm asking Laura's recommendation for to tighten it up so it's something that we can monitor in a year or six or eight months.
Yeah, I think it can be based on the
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um and then I I just want to say, I um I'm gonna vote in favor. And that is because um talking about the regulations of this ordinance and I think um you know, to Commissioner Human's point, that I think we as we're looking at the the Jackson Road overlay and the zoning, we need to determine more specifically if there's gonna be a zone where we do uh allow uh as a conditional use or not. And I think I I I really want that discussed and I think um pointing that out and being more clear in our ordinance is uh will be helpful. So I just want to say that.
We better get busy.
Yes, okay. All right, so um then with that, uh will you uh call roll on the motion, please?
Okay, Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Human.
No.
Commissioner Risar.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yeah.
Commissioner Colvinson.
Yes.
Motion carried for two.
Thank you very much. Are we going, we're going into Honey Creek now?
Can we take a five-minute break?
How about three? Yeah, for three minutes.
Because they can't get in and out as quick, so it slows it slows down the number per hour. I mean, that's what the traffic setting is all about.
Yeah, unmuted. All right, we are continuing um with Honey Creek business park. Come on up. And why don't we have the applicant kind of uh review um sort of the any responses from uh consideration last time in the public hearing and where we are at?
Well, I'm Steve Brower with AR Brower. This is Scott Bowers with Bowers and Associates. Previous submittal, there's a PUD submittal, uh there were some concerns about the the layout, open spaces, things like that. We had review letters from Carlisle Wortman. Uh we addressed those issues, resubmitted them with a letter, you know, indicating the changes that we had made. OHM has, I guess, approved it, potentially, conditionally approved it based on what we submitted. Carlisle Wortman raised some additional issues that we'd like to discuss with you tonight. Uh the road commission, we addressed all their concerns. They've asked for another traffic impact study or an update of the traffic impact study based on the changes that we made that they had requested. Uh the Washington County Water Resources Commission. Um I think they've basically approved it. They have a few concerns, but nothing that's uh insurmountable. So I think the biggest question on the table tonight is Carlisle Wortman's report, they had some concerns as to whether or not the latest changes meet the standard of the PUD. So what we would like to discuss tonight is what does the planning commission appreciate about the plan? What don't they appreciate about the plan? So we can go back to, you know, our customer and say this is where we are, this is what the township would like to see, you know, what changes are you willing to consider?
Sure.
Highlight your
Sure, so um as um Steve said, you know, we we've looked at this a couple of different times, right? We looked at it as a conditional use, now we look at it as a planned unit development. Um I think, you know, they provided a number of community benefits, you know, solar panels, EV stations, um fire contribution, some other contributions. The planning commission kind of has to kind of decide if those uh those benefits commiserate with the deviations that are that are gonna be requested. There is a fifty-foot buffer. Um there are some other deviations, the height deviation for the hotel. Um you know, we talked about the layout and accessibility, pedestrian connectivity. They've addressed, they've addressed some of that, and I think as we get further down, you know, the line and you talk about that a little bit more, but I think the planning commission has to be comfortable um with what they're proposing. Um and whether additional enhancements above and beyond the ZOO, sports court connectivity and the sustainability items that they've already proposed, is that enough? Um I do think there's some cleanup stuff that um we would like to see um Steve and I and Doug talked earlier, and the industrial portion is not meant to be part of the planning and development, but that really isn't. I don't think it's it's I don't think it's entirely clear. And so um I think, you know, we need to ensure that that part is separate from the vacant part that will be developed as part of this um planning and development. Um I also think um place, but we also need to determine, make sure that that thirty percent open space requirement is met. We need the list of the deviations, et cetera. So um I'm happy to answer any questions on our review, but I think I think Steve's right. We're at a we have a conversation between the developer and the planning commission.
Any questions for Laura? Commissioner Hyde?
Well, I'm not sure it's for Laura, so I maybe I should be waiting.
Okay, uh is it Stacy? Are you?
I have a question.
You have a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just looking at at your um memo, and it says there's a twenty-five thousand square foot flex office light manufacturing building. That's what's gonna, no, this is what's gonna go in there. In addition to the hotel, the office building, there's a twenty-five thousand square foot flex office light manufacturing.
That's new, right, Steve?
Yes.
What is flex office?
Those are buildings very similar to what's on Baker Road, just north of um oh, what's that road north of Thetford, where um Marshall, yeah. So yeah, that little development that John Boyle owns there, that's that's flex space, okay? Can have office in the front. It could be some very light manufacturing, some warehousing, those type of businesses. But it's all, you know, light usage, nothing heavy.
And you have another question?
I was just gonna say, what what kind of light manufacturing?
Well, that those buildings that are on Baker, there's a little cabinet shop in there, there's a glass shop in there.
Oh, okay.
Things like that, right? There's it's nothing where people aren't stamping out parts or heavy industrial or anything of that nature.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess it sounds like we're asking the developer questions too. Um I couldn't, I'm, I apologize, I I'm not sure where the three wetlands are. I know where one of them is. But in my notes from the prior time, I'm I said, I wrote down that you had proposed some underground retention or detention uh right in the area of one of the wetlands, but I don't see it on any of the of tonight's.
Each of them is maybe as big as the area you think it's that there, so they're unregulated.
They're unregulated, I get that.
Yeah, but Laura, can you bring up the plan at all?
Yeah, that they're located on page two of the plan. If you go to page two, you can see the interior, the small interior wetlands on that plan.
So they're kind of right where the underground detention is proposed, right?
Would it take water, right? Would it be a detention facility if it's in soils that are
the soils that are compatible with doing infiltration are in the detention pond that's farthest to the east. Everything that's in that area is all pretty hard clay. It doesn't really take any infiltration. The reason those things are wetlands is they were a dip in a farm field that just holds some water.
Yeah.
Right? The wetland, the real wetland is the area that we're not touching, which is to the east.
So I guess my question is, and please please just bear with me, if you just answered it and I didn't understand it. Is that a good place to have your underground detention under your parking area?
Uh well, it is because we may, you know, all the final detention calculations haven't been finished right there. They've done a lot of them. We may need some more detention depending on what the Water Resource Commission ultimately approves. So so, you know, we have, we have two ponds, one of them which infiltrates pretty well, one of them which
Infiltration, this is just
Well, it's just holding it, right, but it goes in.
And it'll seep round from there.
Yes, over time. Well, it it drains, it drains into the storm sewer system, which then ultimately drains into the wetland. So we're you know, the point of it is to slow, you know, all the runoff from the site down to the agricultural rate, which is required by the Water Resources Commission. So we want to make sure we have enough to to do that.
I had a question. Did you um delineate the hundred-year floodplain?
Yes, it's on there. It runs right along the it runs along the large wetland and it goes off to the northeast. But there's a line on there that delineates that.
Okay, um then we'll vote up, OHM.
So we also recommended approval of the site plan, like mentioned tonight, um in our review letter dated September twenty-eighth. We had a couple outstanding comments. Um we noticed a minor error in the sanitary sewer basis of design. Uh so just looking for clarification on that. We had a couple comments regarding the water main layout, and then we're looking for some additional truck turning templates and a phasing plan. And then Jan, you also emailed us about the detention basin being within the floodplain. That is allowed and um generally has been approved in the past, but additional permitting and review by Eagle will be required. That can typically be worked out through detailed engineering as well, and then the water resources will also be weighing in on those items too.
To be clear, Jan, the detention ponds are not in the floodplain. Okay, the water drains into the large wetland ultimately, but that's the only place where we're getting into the floodplain.
Commissioner Moore, you had, or Hyde, you had some more questions?
Well, definitely part of the discussion. So are we going to ask questions and then we're going to have discussions amongst ourselves?
Yeah, I just want to make sure people's questions get.
I'm sure I have questions. I feel like if I were to just read the content of the PUD, I would make my questions, give a little more context to my questions, if you don't mind, I'll be there. This is section 36-24, intent of the PUD district, the planning and development district. The PUD district is intended to permit flexibility in the regulation of land development, encourage innovation in land use and variety in design, layout and types of structure, excuse me, and type of structures constructed, achieve economy and efficiency in the use of land, natural resources, energy, and the provision of public services and utilities, encourage useful open space and provide better housing, employment, and shopping opportunities, particularly suited to the needs of the residents. With that in mind, my questions are, what is innovative about the land use in this PUD, in this plan?
Well, we're, you know, we're trying to use multiple different types of businesses, bringing it into that piece of property, right? The hotel is what's driving this whole discussion. So, you know, there's a, our customer feels there's a need for additional hotel space in, on Zee Road and South Township. So that, you know, that building is what's causing this entire PUD process. And really, it's the fourth floor on that building that's causing this PUD process. So, you know, if they were to decide that, that fourth floor was not necessary, we wouldn't be having the discussion, right? Because this would be a conditional use that would meet your ordinance. So, you know, we're trying to work with what he would like to see, what the township would like to see. You know, I think the retail space, we call it innovative, but there certainly is a demand for retail space on that corner, right? We're trying to bring in flex space, which is, we think there's a, a need for that in the township. It's very hard to find that space, even in outside the township, west side of Ann Arbor and things. It's just not available. And also office, right? Office is, you know, very challenging right now, but we have a potential user for that. So I guess it depends on a person's definition of innovative, right? But we're trying to bring together, you know, four very distinct uses onto that piece of property under the overview, if you will, of your PUD ordinance. So it's, you know, it's challenging to figure out where's the line, right? Where are the goalposts? How wide apart are they? You know, what are we, you know, kicking at or not kicking at, right? Depending as the case may be.
And I'm sorry, what's your answer? Steve Brower. So I have a question about the, the fourth floor in the PUD. This might be a question. But you're saying that you can't, the only way to get to the fourth floor of the hotel is by going through a PUD process? Is that the only way to do a variance for something that tall?
They already approved the conditional use. They went, but it was contingent on, they had to get some more of the fields, variance for the fourth floor, which was denied because there wasn't, it didn't meet the criteria for a variance. So until we change the ordinance, there isn't another way of doing it.
There's not like a conditional. Okay, it has to be a PUD in order to get a fourth floor hotel.
That's what's basically requiring us to be here to discuss this with you tonight.
Well, you know, with that in mind, I would encourage some more innovative thinking of the rest of the project. Economy and efficiency in land. So another part of that PUD intent is an economy and efficiency in land use. Is there an efficiency in land use?
Well, again, we're trying to meet your ordinance. You know, we've got parking issues we have to address. As Laura brought up, there's this, you know, setback issue that we're encroaching on that we need relief from to make this work. We're trying to meet all the Water Resource Commission and township's requirements for wetlands and the, you know, saving of those and detention, you know, the county continues to raise their retention requirements. So ponds continue to get larger and larger. So when you start mixing, you know, the impervious surfaces of a building, the impervious surfaces of a parking lot, the open spaces that the ponds require, all the areas we need for landscaping, it, you know, it becomes very difficult to give everyone what they would like to see. And again, it's, you know, what's your definition of open space, right? So we added, there was discussion at previous meeting about, you know, where's their benefit for the park? So we discussed it with our customer, Scott and I discussed it and said, well, what if we put some kind of a cord in there, right? Pickleboard, pickleball is very popular, could be used by residents. They could use it for badminton, potentially volleyball, things like that, right? So let's put that in there. Some of the people that come to the hotel may use it, right? Some of the people that go to the retail building may say, hey, that's back there. We can use it. Yeah, you can use it. It's for the public benefit, right? So those are things that we're trying to do. But as I said before, you know, one of the reasons, you know, we came tonight is we want to understand what the township appreciates, what the township doesn't appreciate. So that we go back to our customer and say, okay, this is where they're at. This is what we think is gonna, you know, we make these changes. It, it may be able to be approved, but this is, you know, direct feedback from the group who decides.
I guess if I ask about useful open space, it'll be more or less the same answer.
Right. Well, again, you know, we're, the only other option we would have would be to say, okay, let's just take a building off, right? Well, no, a building, right? If you want open space, something has to go away, right? Well, a building goes away, the building.
Parking on the site too.
But again, that's to the ordinance, right? So.
Are we allowed to ignore parking ordinances whenever we go, whenever we're doing a PUD?
No, that, well, you can, they would, we would have to approve the variance for additional.
Sure.
Beyond our ordinance.
So, you know, if that's an option, we can go back to them and say, look, we need to look at taking out, you know, 15, 20, 30, whatever parking spaces.
Yeah, I think it's overparked by 44 spaces.
I thought the issue was the
We did play some for people using them for a while, but it wasn't 40.
Right. I think because the biggest, the biggest use of the parking was the hotel, right? That's what drives the spaces. The other buildings aren't. Okay. Well, we can go back and look at that. If we can take them out, we'll take them out. That's not a problem.
This is a discussion about what we would like to see submitted next time. This is not something we're trying to.
It, it sounds like, yeah, there is.
Action here, but I'm really hearing. Tell us all about what your problems are.
I guess I'm, I'm assuming, well, maybe wrongly, but based on Carlisle report, Carlisle Wortman's report, I didn't really expect that we would get approval.
If you had all the answers that we needed, you'd all lose.
Right. Well, again, Commissioner, we need to take it back to our customer and say, look, here's the feedback, right? This is, parking's an issue. Can we go back? Open space is an issue. What can we do? And see what they're, you know, what they're willing to, to look at.
Yeah, I think, you know, just some feedback is a lot of it, you know, with the flex space is one story. And I think one of the things that we're trying to do in, as we're looking at Jackson Road is one, if you look at the overlay district, is bring in high den, higher density. Okay, so trying not to do the, you know, the one-story buildings, et cetera, along Jackson Road, but increased density. So I don't think many people have an issue with the four-story hotel. It's the, the rest of the land use. And if you have a client for the office, I mean, is there, the other thing we're trying to promote is high-density residential. You know, there's a huge need for multifamily at this point in time in the township and, and affordable, affordable multifamily. There are incentives, you know, from the federal government for multifamily and energy-efficient multifamily. This site is in between some high-density residential and, you know, sort of the commercial corridor. And bringing in some more residential helps, you know, with the connectivity between residential, then there'd be somebody there to play on the sports court, you know, in addition to maybe the office folks. So I think what we're trying to do, when we're saying mixed use, we're really trying to push the residential and the commercial together, as opposed to different types of commercial.
Office on first floor and residential.
Yeah, or a couple of floors of, of office and several floors of apartments or something like that. So what you do is you build up and then you have more open space. And, you know, the other thing is, you know, we're removing about 56% of the trees on the site. And the number of replacement trees, you can't even get on the site. So we're losing all that carbon sequestration too. So I think part of it is, is, you know, less ground cover of buildings and parking, go up more, you know, vertically, more mixed uses. And then you have the, you know, because you have the property on Jackson Road too, you know, a commitment for a link between the two. You know, that would be more pedestrian friendly too. Yeah, I think that's, that's the direction we're trying to go. And this is a really important site. It's a larger site. You have the beauty of the, the wetlands and a lot of very mature trees, a bunch of landmark trees. How do we really look at the natural features of the site? And, you know, marry that with the uses that you have in hand and some of the needs of the township as far as open space and, and residential. And that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, that was kind of the intention of a PUD, of a PUD ordinance was to salvage the majority of the open space and concentrate construction and impervious services in one smaller area, but more densely. And instead you covered the whole site with impervious services, except for the retention pond. So a PUD is to intend to keep the area employed.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Moore.
I just wanted to ask about the retail drive-through. Is that, would be one, that would just be one restaurant there?
Conceivably. I mean, there could be more restaurants, but there'd only be one drive-through, right? Because that's all that would fit on the site.
And does your plan include a walk, sidewalks all in front of your?
Yeah, there, well, there's an existing sidewalk in front of, well, on Zee Road, there's one on Jackson Road. There are sidewalks from Zee Road, Zee Road goes around the retail building to the rest of the site. There's a sidewalk on the West Property Line to the west of the existing industrial building that goes all the way out to Jackson Road. That's on the plan.
We did add a lot of interior sidewalks. It's not the interior. I don't see going up to the road sidewalks.
Yeah, it's right out in front of the retail building and then it's up the West Property Line of. Well, again, I don't know. Laura, can you bring it up on the screen?
But whatever, it's there.
Yeah, it's there. Yeah, it's there.
Is the sidewalk all squiggly right there in front of the property right now, or that's just one of the post changers?
No, it, it bends around. It's serpentine for whatever reason.
Other feedback for the applicant?
Commissioner Colber's going to say, like that city and residential on sites, I will, you know, rehash that. But just things that I'll be looking for in the future, I, I, you know, I don't know the definition for the township business open space, but I'm not, I don't think you should count like detention ponds and floodplains and, you know, wetlands and that. I wouldn't consider that. That's just, you can't build on it. So that's leftover space. You're gonna say that that's towards the 30%. So I would look for something that's, you know, more usable than maybe leftover space there. I would also say with coming back, you know, this is our opportunity to get a lot of public benefit, I think, as part of the PUD. And I know you've provided some, but I'm, I'm gonna say it's gonna be asking for even more, whether it's another bus stop in the area over there that you're gonna contribute to, or how about an electrical, you know, you know, building that are all there, that are, you know, it's gonna be more public benefit than I think it was already been demonstrated. I appreciate that there's EV parking there and some solar. But I would look for even more than that on all of those buildings. Maybe every building, is it every building that was just the hotel that had solar? This is the hotel. Yeah, I mean, it would be, we're gonna look at other buildings, then they're gonna be self-sustaining and you have sustainability elements. So I would beef up any type of public benefit when it comes back.
Yeah, including we've had a recent development that did a carbon neutrality with reporting to the township. And it's a combination of purchased renewables as, as well as being all electric. So those are the directions that we're, we're heading in. And that, and we see PUDs leading that way, because those can be more, as Commissioner Human said, innovative and, and leading edge. That, that's really what we're looking at. And this is, you know, a parcel that does have some very good attributes.
I still have one question.
Yes.
The, I think this is for, for Laura. Are setbacks allowed to be touched in a PUD or are those?
The buffers, you mean?
Yeah, well, they call them setbacks, perimeter setbacks, right? So we have a 50-foot setback here, which I think is required for the, for where it is on the J road or something like that.
Yeah, it's part of.
Yes, all setbacks can be, can, can be deviated from.
In a PUD.
In a PUD. They have to tell us what deviation they're asking for, and then it would be a previous part.
We could, we could want it to be, we could want the buildings to be closer to the frontage.
Yep. So the Zee Road, I think we'd be very open to the, a Zee Road deviation, variance.
It gives you 15 more feet.
Not so much. You know, the wetlands, you need that buffer. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that give you some things to take out?
Yeah, we'll take it back to them and see what they say.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I, I've met you before, Steve, and we talked about that parcel that's not included in this development. I met you at a pre-app meeting. Why would, why aren't you interested in developing that parcel that's the off Jackson Road, I guess?
You mean where the industrial building is?
Yeah.
It's not that we're not, it's just, we have to take one step at a time, right? So this is the first potential step to head in that direction.
Because I, I just wanted to say, I'm full agreement with the description that Commissioner Chairperson Coleman, Colberson said. I couldn't have said it any better in terms of what our vision is for that area. Try bringing residential. And I think I mentioned that to you before, when I met you at another pre-app meeting. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
That I think we need a motion to table to allow them to come back. So we'll address some of the.
I would support the tabling. So we're gonna table it to no date?
Correct.
I'd support that. And we'll just remove from the table on the appropriate day.
So, okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Reiser, to table the Honey Creek Business Park to let the applicant address the concerns of the reports and the commissioner's feedback. Roll call, please.
Okay.
Roll call on the table.
Mr. Reiser.
Hi.
Commissioner Shane, yes. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Human?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde? And Commissioner Colberson?
Yes.
Motion chair for table.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now we'll have Firestorm come back up and thank you for waiting.
Very unique order of the agenda.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It was also on the second page.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
That's okay, I, I think I got.
Now you can read the room and know it's important.
All right, so deliberation, folks, um, thoughts on, uh, the Firestone conditional use?
I appreciate them being here, them answering the questions, them, they're changing their plans. I thought the, uh, elevation on the facade along Jackson Road is pretty attractive. Um, I like them allowing access to Culver's, EV, uh, I'm in support of this project if there are tweaks that people have or conditions of likely support those two, but I see myself voting for this uh, application.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Hyde.
What is this about the encroaching? Is there something that needs to be done as part of this process?
No, that's a site plan. I think it's just cleanup. It just, and I don't even know that it is. I mean, I think the, the survey will, will address that. It's just the aerial looks really weird. It looks like Culver's in Humbers on that parcel in some way.
They're, they're using some of this, this lot, so we're. Some loo- looks like employee parking, but it's like in the dirt area and then some curbing kind of goes, so we're gonna have to meet with them. Um, I've already, I've already called them, the, the property owners talked to them, just to kind of work out how we're going to smooth out the, the joint property line and mesh everything together with what we're proposing and, you know, make sure that there's no concerns that they have.
To, to that point, the GIS is, is off. It's, it's not right. We, we have done the survey. Uh, Culver's is on their own unit. But, you know, within their boundary is appropriate. There is common area that needs to be smoothed out like Todd's talking about, but yeah, that, that's not a big concern.
I just thought it had to be mentioned because when I provide the aerial, it clearly looks like.
Right, yeah.
I didn't want anyone to, what's going on here?
So this is something that we just address at the next.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I, I wanna say, I think it's, um, you're right next to vehicle repair. I think the access um, to the private road is gonna be a benefit for that whole development, unfortunately. But, um, because sometimes there are issues, um, traffic issues with, um, that exit. Um, I appreciate, um, the EVs, the EV stations, and I would like, um, it to be conditioned on, um, providing a minimum of two. It's a smaller, you know, kind of development. Um, that would be one charging station for two spaces, just to um, clarify that. Um, and also, uh, just for your site plan and so forth, we, uh, since you came back, um, the township did pass a, a resolution to achieve community-wide carbon neutrality by, um, twenty thirty-five. And some of the things that we're asking is, um, for the, um, projects that come before us to look at how they would achieve that. Um, and that can be, you know, obviously, you know, all-electric, um, reps, it can be, uh, offsetting your gas, uh, if you're, if you, if you need gas, um, solar, um, enrolling in my green power, that kind of thing. So lots of options there, but the idea is to really think about, um, achieving carbon neutrality by twenty thirty-five, because you'll be here by then, right? Um, with those, the fifty-year, um.
Tenants.
Tenant, tenancy, ten- tenants. Tenancy, yes.
I have a question for Laura.
Yeah, go ahead.
Was there, did I read right that there was a J-Rod design facade issue that needed to be addressed?
There's no issue at this point. That's a that's a site plan. We just like to kind of line up some items, um, so that they're prepared.
And I think the other thing, it was also conditioned on the pollution prevention, um, plan, plan to be submitted with the site plan. Um, the other thing I had down here was, um, that you also provide, you, you provide space for your tires for recycling, um, but there was just trash. It'd be also good to have, uh, make sure you have space for some recycling i- in addition to your trash.
So that there's two enclosures. We'll talk more at site plan.
Yeah.
But in the one enclosure, it's a dumpster and a recycling container. The trash, or the tire enclosure is recycling tires.
Yes, yes. Okay, so you do have trash and recycling room. Excellent, okay. Those were my just thoughts. Any other? Okay, entertain a motion? Who wants to do this one?
I would, uh, regarding the, uh, conditional land use of Application twenty-three dash oh-one-one Firestone Mi- Minor Auto Repair, I would, uh, move that based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting. The planning commission finds the site plan and related information received by the township meets the required standards and findings for conditional land use and recommends approval. Specifically, it has found that the following required standards and findings found in section thirty-six dash two-twenty-four of the zoning ordinance have been demonstrated by the applicant. A, it will be harmonious and in accordance to the objectives and objectives and regulations of this ordinance. B, it will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. C, that the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police and fire protection, drainage ways, refuse disposal, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. D, that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, persons' property, or to the public welfare. E, that the proposed use will not create additional requirements of public cost for public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. And F, that it will be compatible with the township's adopted general development plan. Further, this planning commission recommends the following conditions be placed on the subject conditional land use. First, that.
Install two EV stations.
Applicant install two EV charging stations.
And a pollution prevention plan to be submitted at the time of the site.
True, the applicant submit a pollution.
Prevention plan?
Prevention plan when?
Site plan, with the site plan.
As part of the site plan? Are there any others?
What were the two conditions?
That the applicant install two EV charging stations, and second, that the applicant submit a pollution prevention plan as part of the site plan.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Moore. Further discussion? All right.
Well, I want to, oh, you have set the question aside. Two, do you know what kind of EV stations, I probably asked you this before.
You did, so. Can I just talk about this real quick? Because we, we are fully intended on cooperating with the initiative to, to promote, promote, uh, that. So if I'm hearing it right, the condition is two parking spaces would have opportunity to have vehicles in that, that would have access to a charger to get to charge up. So it's, so I, if I heard, if I heard you right, um, Madam Chair, the, you could have one station that can have two outlets to it.
Correct.
The way I think it's reading right now is two EV charger stations. To me, when I hear that, I think of four vehicles.
We can say, say two spaces as a, as a.
Two charged, two EV charging.
Charging spaces.
Uh, spaces or location spaces, we'll say?
Yeah, spaces.
And I, I was quiet on the EV two versus three, because I didn't hear you say anything.
Yeah, and I, I think in, in, it's probably gonna be mostly employees, because people aren't there that long.
Well, that's why you need three. Well, level three. They're fifty K.
Well, that's why I want, that's why I wanted to talk about this. Because the people that are gonna bring their cars in for service are gonna go into the vanes. And so to me, I think it is gonna be used for employees, or it's probably gonna be used for employees of Culver's.
All of your lows, employees.
Right? So if you do promote the faster charging, you are going to get non-customers coming to here to do this. If that is the intention, then that's, I, 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 I will commit to doing the, the charging stations. Just give me the flexibility to do the, the one or the two.
I think we can say a minimum level two.
If an employee is there for eight hours, he'll definitely get a charge up.
Level two, they, you could get a good charge up.
Isn't a level one like a trickle charge where you have your house?
That's a hundred and ten, I think.
Yeah. It's, it's.
And in a level two with an all-day charge, you're gonna be in good shape.
So when we're contemplating these, um, businesses having EV charging stations, I thought part of what we were thinking is that our community could use them too. So like.
But the community would come in and go to a, a restaurant and, and make use of the restaurant.
No, 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 no. We've, that is, that goes without saying, but we've also talked, like, when we talked about with the dealership, we said leave it open till ten at night, so the community could use the charging stations, so.
And that was the twelve fast charging. I, I, uh, I'm worried about requiring the fast charging. I, I would go along with a minimum of a level two, just because we don't, they haven't done the due diligence for DTE. So if we require something that DTE can't do, they have to come back.
So you were thinking if I had.
Well, we're, we're, I mean, where did that even come from?
What do you mean?
You don't even know that that's an issue. That DTE can't do that.
We don't.
Now, it is true, the dealership is doing their level three, twelve EV stations. They're doing, it's solar.
Yeah, and battery backup.
Uh, battery, but it's not, the, the solar, oh, yeah, but al- also you have to look at the, the size of the business. In my opinion, you look at the size of the business, this is a relatively small business as opposed to the, you know, you had three, um, you know, high-end dealerships, right? I don't know, that, what would, I mean, the Ann Arbor ordinance, where did, they, they, they're not at level three requirements.
They have two levels, cap- capable and installed. They don't designate, so it's either you're wiring it for it or you're installing it.
I, I would say this, people could charge their car at Culver's and eat at Culver's, not, ch- charge their car here, walk next door to Culver's. People could charge it here. They could go to Lowe's, they could charge it here and go to Lowe's. When I drop my car off at Firestone on, here on End Division in, in Ann Arbor, um, I, I drop it off all day, so I could potentially charge it and then say, hey, uh, when you need to do the work, take it out the charger and do the work. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I'm just saying, I leave my car at Firestone for hours, even though the service might not take, because they gotta get to it when they get to it. Or you could drop it off at night for service the next morning. Yeah, so, so, um, so I, I'm just saying, I think it'll be more, uh, it'll get more use than you might anticipate, than, than, because you just have base.
Fair, fair enough, fair enough.
And there's, you, you drive by Firestone in downtown Ann Arbor, there's seven, eight cars in that, all waiting for their stuff.
I was just making a comment. Wouldn't you love to get rid of it? Sorry.
But I'm just saying, there's often a lot of cars there for a long time that could benefit from a charger if they're like.
Yeah, but in any event, I think just requesting that, that two charging spaces, you know, for that size of business makes sense for where we're at now.
Have we gone from stations to spaces now, or?
Well, I think it's, if we're just, we're, I think it, it's more precise to say spaces.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so we're clear on the motion. It's two EV charging spaces, but, um, and we, we won't deal with the levels then, and then, um, the pollution prevention, all right?
So I would just say.
Yes.
One other thing, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This gets us into trouble, being vague and doing one thing for one company and another thing for another company. Now, leave it at that.
So noted. The other one, the other one came with their, what they could do, so.
Are you talking about the words station versus space or EV two versus EV?
Leaving the EV up to one or two and, you know, all that stuff.
Be good with that, or if people prefer a minimum level two.
Minimum level two?
Yes.
Minimum level two?
Okay, minimum level two. All right. So the motion is, uh, two EV, um, charging spaces, minimum level two. All right, we'll call both of these.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Hume?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Moore? And Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. And there are incentives and DTE has some, um, programs to, for the.
Yeah, the DTE conversation, I think what I heard tonight might have been existing transformer versus new transformer. Um, so we'll look into that.
Yeah.
And they do have a program now. You can pay them two thousand dollars and they'll do a pre, uh, they'll, rather than waiting forever for their planner, they will, um, uh, arrange a meeting.
What are the chances of, I heard there's a board, I heard there's a board meeting tomorrow night. What are the chances that?
We'll knock it on that meeting.
What are the next steps for this project?
So the next step is, once the, these planning commission minutes are approved, which would be the next meeting, then, um, I would place you on the next available board meeting, which is like a month, it's a month.
The planning commission meets twice, board meets twice, and.
I wonder if we had a special timeline on it.
Yeah, that's, that's why they also sent it back to us, so they were, you know, feeling like we had already delayed them, so.
The property owner is behind me and he is, sure is very excited that I asked that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, folks.
You too.
Is there a way to walk from Culver's to Lowe's without going into the?
No, you have to go back to the.
There's no cut throughs there.
You gotta, you gotta walk out to the sidewalk on the front.
Yes, but is there a sidewalk back to Lowe's, or you have to walk?
You know what, we'll see in the site plan. We'll see if we can, you know, make that easier.
I mean, I just heard that discussed and I didn't see.
Yeah, you can't go, it, it, because there's a wetland back there on the channel, so you'd have to go back to the road sidewalk that goes into Lowe's.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, reports. Okay, um, the, there are, the rack report, I wasn't sure what that was, because it didn't come up when you clicked on the link either, so. It's just our normal reports.
Right.
What is a rack? Unless you have a.
Road advisory committee.
I've sat in on, I could report that I sat in on the last meeting, and in that, they were discussing the, uh, charges for the, for rack, you know, they were, they were supposed to come up with what they're charged with doing and, and, and update their document. And they were updating the, uh, their road maintenance improvement plan and funding requests for the next year, so. That's what I was a witness to. I didn't take part in it, because I'm not a member. Well, they declined to discuss, to make appointments at the last Board of Trustees meeting. That didn't happen yet either.
Yeah, right. I'll cover that in my report too. Yeah, so Commissioner Moore, do you have any reports?
Yes. And I just wanna say that, um, the group that I'm involved with is the Western Washtenaw Regional Advisory Group, not the Western Washtenaw Housing Advisory.
Yeah.
Western Washtenaw Regional Advisory Group. WW R A G. Or W two R A G, um.
The rag, yeah.
Careful.
So it's an interesting group, um, and, uh, this time we did not have a speaker in particular to, uh, uh, transportation or housing, um, but did a roundtable, what's going on in the different, um, uh, townships, um. Linden Township is doing their master plan review right now, um, and they're also going back and forth about it, where, where they're gonna build a new town hall or a, um, interesting Webster Township, um. They're experiencing a couple of things. Uh, one was they have about a five-acre parcel, um, and they have about thirty-two people living on the property with chickens. With chickens and cows and goats and zoning requires five acres for keeping animals. So they were given a ticket, um, and they're in district court right now, um. So they had a, they defended themselves at the district court level by saying that, uh, Right to Farm Act covered them. And I guess the judge knocked that down because one of the requirements of the right to farm is that you have some commercial activity going on. And they couldn't show where they had any commercial activity, um, so that's still, um. Going on, then another issue they have is some, uh, a property owner on forty acre parcel. They're putting on, um, tiny houses. And so the township, uh, Webster Township is concerned about the lack of, I guess, some gray water is coming on other, um. contiguous properties, neighbors have complained, so the concern is like the running water. They don't have running water, uh, um, or separate, um. So, uh, I guess the landowner is quite upset, he's gonna run for the supervisor job against the supervisor. So that's kind of interesting, um. No, it was Lima, Lima is the one they have been talking about their township hall, what they're gonna do. Um, I reported our meeting about Avalon Housing. Um, and, uh, affordable housing, some of the things. And I've also in previous meetings have talked about our vision and what we're looking to do and changing some aspects of the Jackson Road Court or, um. Chelsea's doing a lot of stuff. One of the things there, I guess, you'd be interested in this, John. The commission, the county commission has been wanting to shut down the Chelsea Court. Out there for a long time and they want to keep the Chelsea Court. So they're trying to talk the commission into putting out, uh, um, uh, putting a, um. A satellite Washtenaw County building that would, so that they wouldn't have to with a registered deeds and all of these services that are downtown. Ann Arbor at the county building and people living out there wouldn't have to go downtown and also like probably a one room court, um, so. You know, that's something that they seem to be interested in. I mean, I'm I'm so used to going downtown for stuff, so I don't, you know, I don't, it doesn't bother me. It just seemed like we talk about budgets and and things. It seemed to be extravagant for the choices that we need to make, like have how can we, how can we support transportation? How can we support a lot of other things in communities and another big building? But, um, that was something that I did not know much about, um. So they're in discussion with the the commission about that. Nothing, nothing's gonna happen too soon. This representative Kathy Schumer, who's really in the Jackson County District. I don't know how she got invited, except that probably Chelsea's had some, uh, uh, conversations with, uh, the mayor of Chelsea. Um, but she was invited to our meeting and she was very interested, oh, there. In whatever she could do to support us in this, our communities, um, and one of the things I brought up was. I was brought up the issue because she brought up this, the the rep- the representative. She brought up the issue about everybody wants solar and renewable and this, but it's gotta make sense, it's gotta, you know. There's a lot of decisions to be made and all that. And so I said, one of the problems that we're having in our developer, with our developers, they're finding that DET is not responsive. So they want to hook on to solar, et cetera, and we're having, they're having problems reaching DET or having DET respond to their calls. Um, and and also we've had some problems with, developers have had some problems with getting, uh. Connections for projects. So she said, why don't you send me that information, I'll look into it. So I thought I'd talk to you outside of our meeting, um. So that's about it, but it's an interesting group of meeting all the township folk and hearing all the, I mean. I don't know that we have any squatters on parcels of land where it doesn't, you know. Um, and I don't know anything of, I don't, I've not heard anything about people using their property to put tiny homes on. I guess they're rentals or whatever, so there's there's that one little tiny home down on Wagner and Waters Road. It's not too far off Wagner, I've never seen anybody in or out of it, I don't think it's ever been occupied, but, um, it's an interesting group, so.
That's. Yeah.
I'm not out of any goodies.
Not yet. Okay. Uh, John, you you broke your report up.
My report is written now.
Okay.
I said, I, did you folks get it?
Yes.
I sent it to Fran. More importantly, I sent it to Pam Boyd.
Okay, Chris.
Uh, PPP Matt, well, I'll tell you, Mr. Reiser's already gave me an update regarding the sidewalks over there, so that's great. It's over there, uh, in the Uplands and Ravines subdivision, it sounds like they're very close to being done, which I'm I'm excited about. We also discussed the Van Krolen property and in, uh, in fact, we walked it, uh, last Wednesday, so. It's a great, great site, they're going to put a parking lot in there, small, I think it's six spaces, um, that you can access in public. And they're they're doing a great, I think, some C students or that there could be employees that are putting trails in back there, so it's it's walkable now, so it's very impressive.
There's trails going in there and, you know, parking next.
Where is that, Van Kroler Preserve?
North, north side. Right. North of Huron River Drive.
That's right.
It's between Huron River Drive and Joy, you can go up, it goes all the way up there, yeah.
It's a one point seven miles, I think, going from from when we walked, I think it was around one point seven going from. From the Hur- uh, Huron River Drive up to the Joy, so it was a good hike. It's more than I bargained for, it is, yeah, it's got some elevation changes too.
Yeah, great.
I had occasion to ride my bike a few weeks ago on the path from Z going into Dexter and it was stunning, stunning. These bridges that go over the, I mean, just unbelievable, so.
It's beautiful.
Keep going, it's fine.
All right. Anything, Carolina Wartman?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, anything that's coming in the, what, um, we had arranged for was, yeah, just when you report, uh, pre-application meetings, things that you.
There is no, there have been no pre-application meetings, um, we did have a staff meeting this past week with, um, Slim Chickens. They were received conditional use approval, now they're getting ready to submit for their site plan, we've reviewed it one time. Um, I think they're gonna resemit tomorrow, so that's likely gonna be on your next, um, agenda, but that's the only new.
Are you doing the report for the Board of Trustees?
Yes, I will do the report. I I, um, Joyce and I discussed when that would happen, that will happen, um, twice a month, it will happen after these meetings.
Oh.
So so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have a report, um, before a planning mission meeting, meeting, so you'll have it by the end of this week for your next.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, oh, HM, anything on your end?
Nope, we have nothing to report either.
Okay. All right, I wanted to go through a a couple of things, one is, um. Uh. Uh, we we did have an, uh, we've had a couple of meetings internally on the Goodrich Theater. Um, and really pushing, um, for multifamily as opposed to other uses. And, uh, they came up with a, um, you know, some incentives actually for the developer to go with, um. Um, multifamily that, obviously, this hasn't come yet from the trustees, but, um, just wanted you to be aware that. Um, whether or not it will stay all those uses or just go to multifamily or what the results will be at the trustees. I did convey that our our push was heavily multifamily, even though we had a listing of of uses, so, um.
Are they receptive?
They are.
Is this like a pre-op meeting?
No, it's, um, prior to going to the Board of Trustees, they were, they were interested in. What if they went multifamily, what and did some affordability, what what sort of incentives there could be? Um, and, uh, so, uh, obviously, it has to go for the, but they have to vote, Board of Trustees, but there had, it has been quite a bit of discussion, which I think is really healthy. Um, let's see, we also, um, let's see, um, you're the representative for Watts, right?
Right.
Um, they are currently in the process of doing a a plan update and, um, we're working on actually meeting with them. Uh, along with this, you know, transportation, um, moving forward, but it is, they are, it is open for public comment. If you go to their website, you can, you can see where you can, um, provide some comment. The next, they're gonna do another session, open kind of, uh, virtual session and they're gonna be talking about projects. So this is the time, if SIO has any transportation projects, uh, this, it's primarily roads, but they do do multi-modal, et cetera. Um, they would, um, they want, you know, want to hear from obviously the different jurisdictions.
What does Watts stand for?
Uh, Washtenaw Area Transit Study.
For transportation study, I think that's the word spelled out, but we didn't meet last. They don't meet every month, although it's scheduled. And they're also taking applications now for projects, so if you've got a transportation related project, Jeff, if there's something to do. You can think of that's either bike lane or pedestrian lane or, you know, I I I think we could do a lot better around Wagner. And 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 Liberty getting people into Ann Arbor along that corridor where a lot of people bike or along SIO Church. In in into the the high school in there, and so if there's, I might retalk to you, Jeff, in that regard, because. Pathways where people live and use it or. Some, uh, the residents want.
For what it's worth, I've had a lot of people approach me about Wagner and Liberty and even a little further down Wagner, trying to get pedestrian paths, so like hundred percent like that.
Right, right, thank you.
Yep.
We could connect Wagner, Liberty, Jackson Road, if you could, because if someday, knock on wood, there's gonna be some housing there. And they could ride their bikes up to Carlisle or or, you know, Session or Holmes Campus or wherever. You know, they have food.
And connected into Ann Arbor, so they can go to.
Yeah, whoever's, sure.
Yeah. Okay, then, um, just the, uh, then I wanted to talk, uh, Sustainability Fair, um, if you guys have networks, please remind people it's this Sunday from one to four. We have eighteen tables plus EVs and, uh, the, what's that, Wheels in Motion, you know, are gonna bring some e-bikes. So there are like all sorts of information and PPP will be there.
That's here or the fire or station kind of both, you go back and forth?
Yeah, it's in the utility base, you can you can walk back and forth. From your umbrella, um, but, yeah. Uh, so, I mean, from, you know, EV charging to, um, DTE incentives to how to electrify your home. I mean, all sorts of.
Worm-based composting.
Yeah, worm worm-based composting, um, yeah. When is it?
Sunday.
Sunday from one to four.
The Sunday.
Yeah, and hey, share it with your contacts at at, um, WAG, W W E RAG, yeah. Um, because, you know, they would be in in interested in it too. Yeah, so I'm just really pleased at the number of of organizations and folks that are participating. Um, and I'll be kid friendly too. Um, uh, we do have a meeting Thursday, the, uh, agenda, we're gonna try, we're gonna keep it to no more than two and a half hours, hopefully two hours. The agenda is working on, um, sort of the the goals and the charge for that advisory group that's going to work with Carla Wartman to. You know, just kind of go through all of the issues around the the zoning update, um.
Is it?
Yes.
The Thursday meeting, is it Jackson Road or is it, it's what's? How to i- incorporate the vision that was set forth in that Carlisle, great Carlisle Wartman report? In in into either planning and ordinances?
Yeah, because we, what we talked about was having, um, a committee that would be composed of the DDA. Planning Commission and trustees that would, or an advisory group kind of, they're not gonna write the ordinance, they're just gonna go through all the things around the ordinance. And what's important to the DDA, you know, make sure the trustees are on the same page.
And what that said here, at what time?
Um, this is a regu- a regular time, seven, seven to nine. On Thurs- this Thursday.
And who's expected?
Just us, we're we're discussing sort of the parameters for this.
So it's not gonna be DDA, there, we're not gonna have DDA?
Not there, uh, this is just getting prepping for that, so we're really clear about what we want to come out of that.
It's a work session, just.
It's a work session and then there, I was thinking there were two other ordinances because they're new ordinances that I wanted Carla Wartman to start working on. And one is the, um, uh, solar ordinance and I will make sure, um, to give you, um. The the resource that Bob and I got at that session from Sarah Mills, that it just goes through the whole, all the issues around. Um, you know, developing a solar solar ordinance and then the other one is the EV charging ordinance, I think it's about time for us to get the handle on that. Um, and we, there are some recommendations that came out of the, um, ESTF Mobility Committee so that we can kind of look at that too. So that's a lot to, you know, pull in, but we're not gonna be, uh, we'll we'll just, I mean, that it'll be a working session and, you know, will be done by nine thirty, yes.
So I have a question, um, when these subdivisions come in, they often have rules that they're carbon copy from other subdivisions or the ones that the developers have used. Where the you can't have solar panels or you can't, you can't use clothesline, there are some pretty. In environmentally unfriendly, uh, terms that come in. Where's the time and how do we nip that in the bud or how do we change that to the extent that doing so is important? Do we do it now when you say, we're not gonna give you a POD, we're not, we're not gonna approve it? Or do we do a commandment, thou shalt not ban solar or EV or?
I I think you almost have to say these are, you you can't restrict it, can we restrict the HOAs?
Um, I, you know, that's a good question, I, the HOA part doesn't really come in front of this body, that's why.
No, no, but the developers come here, but like if I wanted to have chickens, not that I want to have chickens, or if I wanted to have a damn clothesline, I couldn't do it. Because so that, you know, you, there are things you can't do because, oh, that's how we do it. And then government says, well, that's a private, we don't have any say in that, so how do we have a say?
Do you do us a favor and ask our attorneys how we do that?
If I see him? Yeah, okay.
Because I I'm thinking the direction really needs to come.
Do we do it, well, whether at the table and say, do you, what do you plan on doing by way of?
But we have no idea of, well, I think because we don't see the HOA agreements, what can we as a township do to?
Well, couldn't we do a a condition when they come in that that the the HOA shall not drop, you know, there, no rules about. A a about, you know, solar or?
Yeah, but some of them aren't PUDs either.
What's that?
Some of them aren't PUDs either.
Uh, Alice, Alice Mariah.
Was trail, was trail, was trailwinds a POD?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I just think we should be thinking about about that, I was being facetious about the the chickens and the ducks, but but but, you know, there there are. There are things that we should be looking at that comport with our ESCAP plan, I think.
I agree, I totally agree, yeah, all right.
Did, did, did Jim retire?
No.
All right, that was, that was what I had. Do we, anyone else have any other?
I would just ask, I noticed that we don't.
Yeah, the minutes.
I look down, I move approval.
Do we, um, do we just, um, forget about the? Uh, revisions to the PUD statute or whatever, or did so many issues come up that?
A a lot of issues came up, however, and one of them is just like, you know, that fifty foot buffer. P- the PUD ordinance is gonna be primarily about Jackson Road, so it it, we almost need to. So it, it, we almost need to deal with the Jackson Road piece and then also then discuss the PUD and how it relates. So for instance, you know, we not want a fifty foot buffer. At least along, on property lines, right? It may be something different. So there's, because it was really written for.
For land.
Yeah.
And you know, all of those buildings for the Honey Creek Business Park, I noticed this afterward, I would have said something, I think of it. They have all this parking out front, which is totally against what we want to do with, we want buildings to be on this, on the sidewalk and the park mean back.
In the middle, shared parking, so they don't have to.
They, yeah, they surrounded their buildings with parking.
Yeah.
Well, it's in the front too.
Innovative, right?
Yeah, right. I think our planner did a good job by calling it a standard commercial development. Okay, minutes.
I move approval. Support. Anybody?
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as submitted.
Commissioner Chairman, there is someone with their hand raised, I know it's not public comment, but I just want to bring your attention.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, it's PM, PM, I'm gonna allow you to talk.
I'll be quick. Commissioner, Commissioner Moore, your question earlier in the meeting was very good about the residents who don't have a car who need to walk up to restaurants. This summer, at Wendy's in particular, I spoke with the manager of Wendy's and asked about their, their dining room being closed. And he said it is due to the issue of not getting enough employees. He would love to have his restaurant dining room open, but he hasn't been able to hire enough employees. And I recall, have you recall that the session room, a year and a half or two years ago, also was having quite the struggle of maintaining adequate employees to be able to stay open their normal hours. So I think your question is good. I think the actual issue is, is, is lack of employees. So just wanted to share that with you. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. We can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Human second by Commissioner Chang. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned at nine thirty-three.
That's pretty efficient.